Order. Mr. Schink, will you call the role?
This is Pat Rocky.
Here.
Mr. Rare. Here. This is Casey.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Binting.
Here. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Schink, will you call the role?
Mrs. Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare. Yes. Mrs. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Binting.
Yes. We'll have a moment of silence and we'll remember our people in Florida. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Troy Smith to lead us in the pledge.
All right, Fred, do you want to come on up here?
Yay!
All right. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, Mark Cook, we are very proud to have a few students here to share with the board and our community various ways that we at Mark Cook are continuously having students perform at continuously higher levels. And this evening, Mrs. Brandy Moore is going to work with our students and give you just a little bit idea of how we intervene throughout and enrich throughout our building with our Title program and our target time. Some more?
Okay, hello, everybody. Thanks for having us. It's so exciting to get to come out of the classroom and share with you all the fun stuff, the educational stuff that we're doing at Mark Cook. So thank you so much for having us. Anybody can click through the PowerPoint. Perfect, okay. So I just wanted to take a couple minutes before the kiddos get to their shining stars of the evening, just to give you a little bit of background about what's happened this year in Title and with our target time. So myself, as the Title I teacher, Danielle Stiles, our Mark Cook literacy coach, and then we have a fantastic team of aides, Julie Reed, Malia Hicks, Peggy Mueller, Darla Dickerson, and Anne Marie Klein. And together, all of us that work in this department have over 133 years of teaching experience. So I know Mrs. Stiles and I are super excited to have this team of ladies so dedicated to making sure every student succeeds at Mark Cook. So what exactly do we do? We provide targeted reading intervention for students in our building, grades K to 2. We currently are seeing 120 students in 28 different skills groups during target time. Intervention teachers, the title teachers, and all of the general education teachers are working together during that 40-minute target time to make sure that each student is receiving a lesson targeted specifically to their needs, which is really exciting. So there's a lot on here. I'm not going to read it all. I just wanted to take a snapshot of a 40-minute target time and kind of run through how we got the groups to where they are. So I just highlighted or bolded that first grade group from 10 to 10:40. So there are five first grade classrooms that all go to target time for that same 40 minutes. And during that 40-minute time, they are divided up into their target time groups. How did we decide which kids go to which group? Well, we took a look at all of the assessments that were done at the beginning of the school year. So Acadiants is our diagnostic testing that we take three times a year. We are monitoring the growth of those students in fall, winter, and spring. Same with the math data. That is one of those tests that will adapt to the students as they're answering questions. So we can get a lot of really good data from that test as well. And then we brought in the entire team of teachers and we said, let's even dig deeper. Let's look at their star reading score. What level did they come into first or second grade reading on? Let's take it even further and administer some individual tests where we can look at phonemic awareness. We did some Orton Gillingham, which is a fantastic way to teach students using multisensory instruction and some other screeners as well. So we got all of our groups set. We met for a whole half a day, all the teachers involved in target time, and we took all of those students in those five classes and divided them up into their target time group. So here's what it looks like. We have 109 students during that time going to 13 different teachers, aides, or mentors. So we've got students working with intervention teachers on their individual IEP goals. We have students working in very small intensive reading groups, maybe just working on one letter or one sound. Then we have students going to other teachers working on fluency, comprehension, and enrichment. So we have taken the entire range of students, looked at each one of their individual needs, and matched them up to the place that's going to benefit them the most during that 40 minutes, which I personally think is super exciting. It's a little bit different than the way we've done it in the past, but we know that we are doing what's best for all students in all grade levels. All right, so the moment you've all been waiting for, you want to see what these awesome kiddos are doing in their target time. So my first group is going to be Hayden, Paisley, and Noah. So if you guys walk over here to this table, you guys will have your turn in just a minute, okay? All right, so if I could just say one more thing about the multisensory approach to learning. This is something that Mrs. Scherzinger asked if I would be interested in attending this training, and it is very intense. There were two parts to it, a practicum I, a practicum II. I have finished practicum I and I'm currently in practicum II. The amount of, I'm sorry that my back is too gentle. The amount of information that I was able to bring back and actually use in the classroom is really exciting to me because let's face it, sometimes we go to professional development or trainings and you're like, hmm, maybe I can use it, maybe I can't. But this stuff is so good. I've seen it with my own eyes, how well the students react to it and can apply it to their reading skills. So I am super excited to be able to bring that back and use it in our small groups. All right, so this group here is working on short vowels and the first list of high-frequency words. So what we did, I'm going to stand over here because you guys can still see it. So what we do from Orton Gillingham, that company, they have given me this resource that basically gives every one of our short vowels a picture and some sign language, like a hand motion. So we're bringing in the visual. We've got the auditory when we hear the students talk and say the sounds. And then we've got that, the piece of movement where they have a little cue that they're going to use when they want to remember one of these short vowels, okay? Are you guys ready? We're going to start with A. Use your really loud voices so the people in the very back can hear you. Are you ready?
A says ah.
A.
A says ah.
Okay, we're going to do short E.
E says eh.
E says eh.
Short I.
I says eh.
I says eh.
Short O for octopus.
O says ah.
O says ah.
And our short U.
U says uh.
U says uh.
Excellent job! So what's so cool about this is I will, we'll be at the reading table and we're reading a passage and we're sounding out a word, and maybe they get stuck on the letter I. I can see the little wheels turning. They're looking at the letter. They're trying to remember what that sound is. And all I have to do is scratch here or here, and it will trigger their brain to remember this is the cue, this is the letter, this is the sound. And instead of me as the teacher giving them the answer every time, they are literally training their brains to use that cue system to retrieve that sound or letter that we're working on. So, super cool. All right, and then we have a list of red words. And these are words that are just words you cannot typically sound out. They're rule breakers, right? They don't really follow the rules that most of our language follows. So when we want to introduce a new red word, here is what the students do. Here are your red word cards. And we've got this tactile piece where we are putting this screen that has a little bit of a texture to it, and they put that over top of their word. Okay? Remember, when we touch the dot, we're going to say the word. So you show them what we do. The word is? Two. T. O. Two. Let's do it again. Two. T. O. Two. And again, it's bringing in that tactile piece where they're physically touching those letters. And it's amazing because when they get to the word, if they get stuck when they're reading, I literally can just take this red word and put it in front of them, and as they begin to trace the letters, it will trigger their memory. The word is two, and then they can keep reading. So these skills will build upon each other as we go throughout the school year. And so these first graders are going to be reading chapter books before you know it. So make sure you get prepared for that, Mom and Dad, because they're doing awesome. All right, one more thing we're going to show them, and then it's the next friend's turn, okay? Hold those cards out. The other part of Orton Gillingham with the sensory instruction is really bringing in that large muscle movement whenever we can. Doesn't necessarily mean we're up running around the classroom. It means we are using our large muscle to help train our brain for these tricky words. So you guys hold your cards up. Ready? T. O. Two.
T. O. Two.
Good job! So again, just another piece, the pathway to the brain, bringing in visual, auditory, tactile, and kinesthetic. And when we do all of that together, we are setting these young warriors up to be readers, which is so fantastic to watch and be a part of. All right, thank you, guys. I'm going to let my next. I'm going to get parents for just a minute. Have a seat. All right, and my next friends coming up are Hunter and Addie. They are two second grade friends in Mrs. Smallwood and Mrs. Anderson's class. And just to show you what we have going on in our target time, we've started with these youngest warriors learning the short vowels and building their vocabulary with red words. And if you move ahead to second grade, we've got some readers in our building that are actually reading a chapter book by Beverly Cleary on a fifth grade level. So I'm going to let these two warriors kind of share with you what they do during their target time. All right? Do you want to? You can go first. So he's going to read a little bit. Why don't you show him the front cover of the book so they know what you're reading from? Tell him what the book's called.
Socks.
Okay? And he's going to read you just a little bit from the book. All right.
The fourth one I.
And make sure you use a really loud voice so everybody in the back can hear you.
I'm on my mother's because she's on her phone.
I think she's hearing her picture from you. I don't think she's. All right. All right, big loud voice. Here we go.
The fourth one that we.
I know, it's really, don't give yours. It's really okay. Look out, Mrs. Smallwood.
Talk to me, Hunter. Read to me. It's my second-class buddy.
I just have a.
It's okay.
You're okay.
On the fourth sentence, Charles William, oh, the violin went on. So. Four sentences, Charles William took one look at Uncle Morgan and swore. Okay, well, the next. Charles William hit his face and his mother's neck and sobbed.
Okay.
Next sentence. This is the funniest.
Oh, it's just like a waddle's bald head.
Okay, so you want to tell them how we make, how you make inferences when you're reading? So you read about the baby and he's crying. And then Aunt Cassie says, oh, it's just Walter's bald head. And then what? Why do you think she said that?
After, I'm just going to read.
Okay.
Said Aunt Cassie, my old factory. All the babies are frightened the full time they see a wolf.
Those poor babies, they just they get so scared with those bald heads.
Do I have to weed all of them?
No, you don't have to weed all of them. All right, so then you want to tell them about this you saw? Just maybe pick one, one thing off of there that you knew.
Okay, so. That was what it was.
So the funny part, when you were laughing, what do you write down, the notes to yourself, when something is funny?
So funny equals oh-oh.
So then every day, Mrs. Smallwood and Mrs. Anderson spend about five minutes on writing extension after they read the chapter or the section of the book for that day. And so Monday, do you want to tell them what Monday is, Addie? Like the name of Monday, do you know what, remember what Mrs.?
Make it Monday.
Make it Monday. And what was today's journal entry? What did you have to make?
Write yourself a reminder to do something.
Okay, so she's going to write a reminder, and she wrote that in her journal, and she's going to read it for us now.
Dear Addison, please remember to get ready for ballet when you get home. And put shoes on, then get your ballet bag and bring it to class. Don't forget your ballet shoes because you are working on a show. Love, Addison.
Fantastic! I said fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, so that's pretty much my little part of tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But just thank you again for allowing us to come in and show you all the great things we're doing at Mark Cook. There is one more slide. For those of you that haven't heard, last week or the week before, we actually hosted. We opened up our doors and we invited all of our parents to come back in after not being able to do that for a few years. And we planned a Mark Cook family night. We had over 300 Mark Cook students in attendance, with attendance numbers well over 500 if you include other siblings and family members. And it was just such a fun night. They had so much fun coming in dressed up as superheroes, and they were able to play games. Like, I know it's hard sometimes as a parent to just unplug, but like, two parents and a kiddo just sitting in the music room, listening to soft music, reading a book to each other. And then you come out into the gym, and I had kids and parents building legos and playing puzzles together, and then over here having a snack together. So just a great evening for us to welcome our youngest warriors into our building. This incredible staff, because Coach Stiles and I could have never planned something like this without the help of our teachers and colleagues. So everybody stepped in and made that a really fantastic night for our students. So thank you again for letting us share what we're doing in Title and Target Time.
And one thing I'll mention, I think a lot of times, you know, we talk about learning data and what we do with learning data, how our teachers use that to organize specialized instruction, also whole group instruction. This is a perfect example of that. I mean, they're identifying kids' strengths and challenges and placing them in spots where they can get support and grow as they need to. So hats off, ladies, that's exactly.
And thank you for giving this opportunity. I really want to thank Mrs. Scherzinger for just giving us this flexibility to say, you know, there are a few changes we'd like to make. Here's the reason why. Here's the data to back it up. Is this okay? And Mr. Smith, who's been so supportive of allowing us to change a little bit with the master schedule and do things a little bit differently than we've done in the past. But we, we know it's working. The data is already showing us the growth that these students have made in such a short period of time. So I'm excited to see where they're all going to end up at the end of the year. So, thank you very much.
And I'm going to ask our other three friends if you come back up quick.
I think Mr. Smith might have something for you guys. And thank you, parents, so much for coming out on an evening. I know there's a to-do list a mile long. You probably have to get things done at the house. But we really appreciate you coming out and letting us celebrate these warriors. All right.
On behalf of the board, we do have a little certificate for each one of our students this evening. And as you proceed your certificate, Hayden, do you want to tell us who you brought with us? Who brought you this evening? Introduce who you, who came with you.
My mom.
There's mom. Paisley, who did you bring with you this evening?
My sister and my dad.
Your sister.
I brought my mom and my brother, maybe though.
Mom and maybe brother? Maybe brother! And Hunter?
I brought my mom and my dad.
My mom and my dad. And finally, Addison, who did you bring with you?
I brought my mom, my dad, and my aunt.
Very good! And also, on behalf of the board, I would just like to say absolute incredible job to two ladies who have stepped into new positions this year and absolutely have done a phenomenal job. As Mr. Edwards alluded to, I mean, this is the key to what we do with that data. Not only having that data, but then organizing those times and those students at particular target times is quite the trip. These two ladies have done an incredible job. And I want to say thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart. Very proud of both of you. Thank you, board. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Edwards.
If I could have Coach Smith and Coach Gadio and their ladies come forward, please? Good job. You're having a good job, everybody.
Yay!
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So as you can see by the slide, these ladies know why they're here. And we're here to congratulate them on a back-to-back Southern Buckeye Academic and Athletic Conference championship team. We're exceptionally proud of their efforts. I want to start, first of all, with thanking their two coaches, Mrs. Gadio and Mrs. Smith, who basically was handed, what, three years ago to? Six? That asked, raised their hand when it came to starting a ladies, Lady Warriors golf team. It was a new opportunity that we wanted to offer our kids, and we were able to do so. And wow, how they have soared and how great they have done. So tonight, you're here, ladies, just so that we can honor you, congratulate you on a back-to-back league championship. So first of all, from all of us, congratulations. And I'd like to have Mrs. Gadio read the name of the individuals who are here tonight. We have a pen. You have a, oh, those are the ones that are here.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
I sat down. I thought those ones weren't here.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
All right, Jolene Schultz. Audrey Maynor.
Congratulations.
Taylor Tilly.
Don't you just love the shirt? Turn and face, turn and face the crowd there.
Julia Alguire.
Congratulations. Now, while she's standing here, I'm going to do an extra embarrassing moment because if you've read my newsletter that I put out Friday or our Facebook post, this young lady is not only a good golfer, but, and these are all great kids too, but she is a National Merit Scholar semifinalist, which is an incredible accomplishment. So we're very proud of you for that as well as.
Ari Ferris. Marina Gar. Reagan Wheatley. Reese Wheatley. Reese Wheatley. And Dina Wilder.
And Mrs. Gadio just wants to point out the best, is that fall sports best GPA?
Sorry, to the academic team, but these girls have like a four point something, something.
Not my fault.
So. All collectively are, are smart.
That's a double congratulations.
Of all the seasons in sports.
Great job, ladies.
All right. They want my job, ladies.
Great job, ladies. Congrats again.
Congrats.
Okay, at this time, we'll have Mrs. Scherzinger give her report on the local report card.
Well, I came, I just yesterday, it was a few months ago, to update you on our report card, I just wanted to come and give you a few more updates. I don't think we knew progress maybe then. But this is our district report card. I know Mr. Edwards sent you a little bit of a summary on our results. Super proud of all the work of our district teachers and staff and the results show all of our hard work. Next slide. So we have a lot to celebrate, excuse me. We were highest in the county in achievement. We were highest in the county in gap closing. We were highest in the county in graduation rate. We're highest in the county in the third grade literacy score. And we have five stars in gap closing graduation rate. I mean, that's an impressive list of things to talk about and to be proud of, being the highest in those areas. Next slide. For progress, we were a three stars a district, but if you look at what three stars means, evidence that the district met student growth expectations. So all of our students grew at their expected rate. So even though it's a three star, I feel like, all right, we did what we're supposed to do. We met our student growth expectation. So I'm super proud of that three star rating as well, just because it means that our students grow, are grew. This is a breakdown, which I thought was super interesting of throughout the whole state of Ohio, district level stars and then school level stars. So that kind of gives you an idea of, let's say, for example, we were in progress at three star. So if you look 30, you know, 50, basically 70% of schools were three stars or less. So I think that was a really good measure for us to check a little bit too, because it's a new report card. So when you can compare yourself to your county, when you compare yourself to statewide, then you can see some of our definite celebrations there as well. Graduation rate definitely, since we're a five star there in gap closing, super exciting data that our district had. I didn't want to talk about early literacy, because that was one of our lower scores, yet we were top in the county. And this is a distribution by school. So the colored in is the school stats and then the numbers that you see kind of beside it, that is districts. So if you look, I have to do math very quickly. So 5.2% and 13.4%, so about 19% of schools were a four or five star. The rest of that 80% is a three or lower. You think about a one star, 30% of our schools are a one star and then 23% is a two star. So definitely one of those measures that is a little more challenging statewide. So our ODE has given every school in the state a typology. It ranges from urban very high poverty to rural high poverty students. And if you look at early literacy, it is definitely a socioeconomic tie. So we've been really trying to push at our early elementary, the Imagination Library for parents of anyone that's five or younger to get books in their hands for free, because the more a student is read to, obviously, the better reader they're going to be. So I just thought that was really interesting to see too, looking at, we fell in small town, high student poverty. So if you look there at that situation, one school in the state of Ohio was not a one, two or three star.
So eight, eight out of 89 schools that are in our classification are a three, two or one.
So we always talk about the celebrations, but then also what are we doing about, about this? And I know Brandy did a great job explaining some of our early literacy work that we've been doing. Go to the next slide. We talked about, so let me back up. Some of our challenges that we face, our targets and these components are increasing. So even though we had a pandemic and even though early literacy scores did not look good, it's going to get harder. They're raising the bar for all of those components. So that's something that we're worried about and focusing on as well. Our data shows we still see academic impacts from the pandemic and, you know, as our money's going away. So we've added some layers of intervention and tutoring and all these different positions. And so that's definitely a concern. You know, we had summer school the last couple of years, which I really think helped some of those students that did see some academic gaps. I know we planned on at least one more academic summer school for the school year or for the summer coming up. So, but that is something I think is going to be a challenge for us. If you know anyone, we're still looking to hire a high school English tutor. We are in October and we have not found an English tutor for the high school. And we do have to have, we need to have a part-time math Spalding aid. So we are missing two key positions in that intervention process. And we also have new graduation requirements once again. And if, I should have brought the paper, because we met this morning. It's a two-sided paper and there are so many different ways a student can graduate right now. It is crazy. You just, how many different seals there are. So those are definitely challenges that we're going to be working on throughout this school year and probably for the next several school years. But overcoming our obstacles, I can't say enough about our literacy coach, our title teachers. We have Danielle Stiles and Kelsey Ryback, who are actually servicing grades K through eight this year, which is more than we had last year. And Danielle is focused on Mark Cook. So you, you saw that wonderful intervention that's happening. It's those two ladies there who are organizing that, helping teachers with their lessons, just getting that, to know every single student, what is their deficit in reading and how can we get them to be a reader before they go into second grade? It's really working, because this year, there's part of the law that says if a district has fewer than 10% of students scoring below grade level, this measure will not factor into the overall score for the K through three literacy. And this year in kindergarten, we had less than 10%. So that's super exciting coming in. We made some plans for having more people help. Think about a kindergarten student coming in and they've got to take that math assessment in the first few days of school where they have to use a mouse and answer questions on a computer. Some of them may have never even used a mouse before. So we put extra teachers in to help with the testing process. Danielle went in and coached them up. She showed them how you use the mouse, how you take the test, and I think it really worked. So we do have less than 10% of our kindergartners who scored to be on a ramp this school year. So were there some debate? If I called ODE and talked to somebody in the office of accountability, they gave me one answer. Our Hamilton County people gave me a different answer. So we'll see how this plays out for next school year's early literacy scores. We were selected to participate in a new program called Lead for Literacy, where our elementary principals are two literacy specialists, Tom Turner and myself, will be attending these institutes where we are building our knowledge on literacy, MTSS, and then leadership topics. So how can I support my teachers? When I go into a literacy classroom, what should I be looking for and how can I help support lessons in that area? Next one. We are trying a new tutoring program at the high school this year for high school math. And what's happening is every math teacher has a bell where they are actually tutoring the students. So it's really hard to find someone who's willing to tutor high school math, but I think this is a great way for us to get that intervention happening by people that know the content and who know our students. So I think that's going to be very powerful. You see Claremont's providing the high school three free math tutors for this year. So they're working with the teachers who are doing intervention and working, well, in small groups with students as well. And I said, intervention is happening everywhere. You saw Mark Cook's intervention, the same basic setup is happening at Spalding as well. The middle school, their intervention time is called Warrior Workshop, where students may work with a teacher during that time. And then the high school has Warrior at Bell and also tutoring that's happening throughout their school day. So we have intervention and enrichment happening everywhere, every day. And then, of course, we have some wonderful content area experts in science, socialized math and English that our teachers work with on professional development days. A lot of times those experts will come into the classroom, give feedback, and I think it's just a powerful relationship. We've worked with all of them for probably at least seven years at the least. So the teachers like the experts, the experts love our teachers, so it's a great relationship. And that was all for the report card update, but I did want to see if you have any questions for me before I turn it over to the exciting financial part.
I don't necessarily have any questions, but I love that some of our teachers who have been here for some time are willing to like step outside the box and continue to grow and they're eager to grow and try new things with students, right? Like it, it's easy to get stuck in your everyday and get very comfortable and, and ride that out, but it seems like we're always trying new things and really challenging.
And I know I say this every time, our teachers are the best.
I know.
And like Brandy, she didn't say this, but she sacrificed her whole summer to go to that practicum and she signed up to do the next one. So they're just willing to do whatever it takes to help our students.
And we see with the kids with what they're demonstrating tonight, like they missed out on that during COVID.
Yeah.
Several months, the kids that were in K through two.
Yeah, you're right. We couldn't do small groups and.
Yeah, I mean, they really missed out a lot and that's, you see, what's their, not having to wear masks or being in person in classrooms.
Well, she was talking about a lot of the multisensory too, is your mouth. Well, if you have a mask on, you can't, people are forming the letters for the sounds too. So it has been a challenge, but I feel like we're on the right track now. It's exciting to see.
So Teresa, how did our, how did Goshen School District fare countywide?
Very well. I would say we were tied for first in like overall county rankings. So if you look at our district and one other, I'm not going to name, we were pretty much neck and neck for maybe higher in one area and we're higher in another, but we were in the top of our county. Do you meet with the other schools in our county for swap ideas or anything? Or I'm sure people should be calling you a lot because. We actually do get lots of, we do get lots of calls. I go to Hamilton County. Hamilton County moved all of their curriculum services to Hamilton County because it was such a small group. But every month I go over there and we will exchange ideas on, what are you doing for literacy? You know, how, how are you doing, like what content stuff for math have you picked and that kind of stuff? So it's really good to be able to go and kind of just share ideas. And it's funny because the same struggles that we see, other people are seeing as well. I don't share too much. Oh, I won't share. I am an athlete, so I know to keep some things quiet. Y'all understand my whole game plan.
Any trash talking going on?
Oh, you know, there's trash talking. Any other questions? Well, I'll just say it again, you know, there's some in the room. Our teachers are the best. We, our, our students are so lucky. As a parent, I can say that too. I've been in three different school districts and no one, no one is better than Goshen teachers. So thank you for your support and I'll turn it over to Mr. Schinkel.
Before Mr. Schinkel starts, all these ladies and Mr. Smith have been speaking, given my entire bullets one and two under our goals and target areas discussion, because they're all good illustrations. I mean, this is what we've been spending our time doing and then taking it into the classroom and executing all those great ideas. They've been working with each other, the content area experts, the principals, their department chairs, each other, and doing a great job with all of that. So hard work gets you a long ways and, you know, we find that with our adults for sure. And another area of the report card. Yeah. Okay, so you guys should be aware that on the report card is a financial piece as well. So I know that you're aware that some of that data is on there and I think we just picked a couple of bullets for you to illustrate the things that are on there.
Yeah, normally, you know, we don't really go out there and just talk about all the finances that we do here at the district, but if you look at on the state report card, there is a financial piece. And just to really let you know where we sit at, that when we're out here now talking about our bond issue, this is, here's, here's the facts and it's right on the report. So if we look at this next slide, our operating spending per pupil, I mean, we spend $10,150. They take the total expenditure of the district divided by enrollment and come up with that. And you can see the state average is $11,246. You know, to be $1,000 under the state average, you know, we've got 2,900 kids, I mean, that's equivalent of $3.2 million annually that we're under the state average. So I mean, hats off to everyone. And when these guys are coming up with ideas of what to do and all this instruction, I mean, I lean on them heavily. We, we try to put, you know, time, effort and money towards all this and it pays off. And you can see there the classroom instruction number, that next one, they, the next little section there is class, classroom and non-classroom, which the non-classroom, of course, is busing, the Duke energy bill, that sort of thing. But we spend $7,169 compared to the state of $7,664. So we're still under that, but if you do the math on that, we're spending 70% of our dollars right in the classroom. I mean, that's huge when you think about the busing, electric and everything else that's out there. That's why our numbers are so good on that respect. The next thing I really want to point out here is our revenue sources. If you look at our local, the low, that $10,464, that's not just real estate, that's our income tax. When everyone's saying, hey, we're paying so much in taxes, I understand what they're saying, but we're at the 20th floor. I mean, we, we get the bare minimum dollar in our general fund and then our 1% income tax, which is 26%. Most schools in the state, the average is 42%. I mean, 16% that we collect under the state average, I think is really significant dollars. Now, on the next line there, you see our state dollars, we get 51% of our dollars compared to the 37. And it's kind of a wash when they work there, because everyone kind of gets the title and the Title II A and all that sort of stuff for the federal dollars and those kind of even out. But we do get a lot of our money from the state and not as much from the local. And I just really want you guys to be proud of that. And so like when people are out there saying like, we're paying way too much more taxes, I mean, you really need to go out and look at other districts and see what that number is, because 16% is a significant number. And I know on the, on this next slide, I kind of alluded to that we spend roughly 70% on our classroom instruction. Well, we're the top third for people, I mean, for districts that are comparison in our size. It's not like we're comparing ourselves all of a sudden to Mason schools or a smaller school like Felicity. I mean, those are schools our size. I mean, we're in the top third of what we do in our classroom spending and that's where we really put our resources. So I just really wanted to point out a couple of those little spots with the state report cards, because people are reading that now. And I mean, that's another thing that we don't really go out there and brag about, but we really do try to get the bang for the bucks. And you see our results, we're number one in the county and, you know, we're, we're staying within budget and, I mean, it's, it's a total team effort on there. So, and I want to piggyback off Teresa as well and say, we do have the best teachers out here, so hats off to you guys. I don't know if anyone's got questions on that.
I think one of the big pieces here is that our, our goal is, that's why we do all like the energy savings plans. That's why we all look at all the operations things and try to reduce those expenditures. That's why I fight when we go to add a bus crowd or something like that, rather, I'd rather spend the money inside the classroom and on our kids and the intervention, rather than going up the chimney and the energy.
Yeah, we always compare every, everything we can save to what's that, what's that get us for a teacher? Anything we can save that helps us get a teacher, that helps us get an aid. And then that's where we put the money. So I don't know if anyone's got questions on that. I know I kind of really ran through that real fast, but just wanted to share some of those points on there.
I'm going to say kudos to you guys on that, because I know that there's been a fair river several years to our smart spending with the HX system and things like that. So I think it helps when times like this come and we are desperately in need of more space, that you guys are very financially responsible.
I mean, honestly, a lot of the stuff you saw tonight, that's investment in, you know, Danielle Stiles position, as in those things that, you know, make a difference with, you know, reading and helping start to spend money on that rather than the other, up the chimney.
You know, I like seeing the numbers and I love percentages. So I appreciate that. Well, and the comparison of it all, because, you know, there are a lot of keyboard warriors out there on social media lately, talking about how we don't spend well and how, you know, they're getting their income tax and all these other things and, and then they, people will go. And then they, people will go on and say like, well, get the surrounding districts and what they're paying in tax and, you know, it's, yeah. I do appreciate seeing that number and seeing how low our number is compared for the statewide average because to me that is important. Because I live here and I have a business here, so, yeah.
But I think one thing, and I mean, I am blessed that I inherited from a previous treasurer, you know, a year ago. But I mean, the fact that Goshen hasn't ran an operating, an operating level, not a bond issue or repeal, anything of that nature, 1976. I think we're like one of only two districts in the state that is back that far. I mean, that's, and that's hats off to everyone. I mean, that's, you know, it takes a team effort to do that. But 1976, I'm telling you, that's, that's pretty incredible, so.
All right.
I think that's it, yeah.
Next up is Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Bramble. Talk about our senior trip.
Mrs. Owens is here too.
You want this?
Do I want this?
Or do you want to head on to it?
Um, we'll head on, yeah, we'll head on. Thank you, everybody, for being here today and allowing us to come up and have a conversation with you. I think something that makes Goshen extremely special is that we take a moment to step back and yes, we've got all of these amazing things that are going on in the classroom that are so very important. But I think also as kids grow and get older, there's something to be said about experiences. And also allowing students to come and make suggestions and trying to be able to make opportunities happen for students. At the very beginning of the year, our class president, our senior class president came up to me and asked the question. You know, I know, once upon a time, and Mrs. Walker, I think it was before you were even at Goshen, our senior classes used to go on senior trips. And I said, I am aware of that. We've, we've had some things happening in our world as of late, but tell me more about that. And he didn't have a lot of information at that time, but he wanted to know if I was at least interested. And, um, and I gave him a little bit of a project. I said, I'd like for you to find me some adults that would be interested in a conversation and then we would go ahead and move forward from there. So these lovely ladies, Bev and Jen, are the class sponsors of the senior class. And Aiden does what Aiden does and he gets things done. So he went to them and started to have this.
We talked about it, we, we had kind of bounced it around last spring. I think we were sitting decorating for prom and they're like, do you think you could take us on a senior trip? I'm like, well, we can look into it. And so I kind of put it off over the summer, you know? And then Aiden came to her and then came to me and he said, you know, what do you think? And I, and I can't say no to Aiden Brian. So, um, so anyway, so, um, so Bev and I talked about it and we went to Stephanie and we, we went and got a few quotes from different companies. And so we came up with Junior Tours, who I've gone on two trips with them back way, way long time ago, like in 99 and 2003. So I've been here a while. But, um, so anyway, so I've been with Junior Tours before and they were great. I know that's who they went through on trips before. They had the best price, they got back information to us the quickest and, um, and we just liked what they had to offer. So, um, we talked with Mrs. Walker and we came up with these dates because we didn't want it to interfere with testing. Fortunately, they are seniors, so, um, they don't have to worry about the testing like that. Okay, so, um, the day, uh, the cost per student is based on 40 to 50 paying students. It's $1,035. It's a bus trip. That covers their breakfast, their dinner, the admissions. And, um, and I, we chose to go to a Broadway show. There's no baseball games available, so Broadway it is. So, um, but anyway, um, if they, we don't get the 40 to 50 students, the deposits will be refunded and the trip will be canceled. So we need to get that many students. We polled the students to see where they wanted to go. We put DC down and New York, they picked New York, and we had 95 responses of kids interested. So I really think that we, and it's been a couple of years since they've done anything. So I think we'll probably get, get 40. I know the kids are like kind of buzzing about it and they're, they're excited. So, um, the company said that we wanted to get in here because we want to give them time to get money together. So $200 deposit goes toward their trip. Um, that's, that would be due like around the middle of November. That date is kind of negotiable. There will be monthly payments for the families. They have scholarships we can do. They have like those scratch off cards that kids can raise money. They will all have their own separate account, so they pay directly to them. We don't have to deal with any of the money, which is very nice. And then like that way they can give their little code to their grandparents or, you know, they can get people to help them out. So, um, the students would be staying four per room. Uh, we would have 10 or one chaperone per 10 students. So at this point in time, we know the two of us and Mrs. Walker probably, okay? And then we'll find another chaperone. We'll be on a deluxe motor coach. There'll be nighttime security at the hotel, two people all night long so that we can sleep too. And they'll take, we'll take the doors to make sure that they stay where they're supposed to stay. So the next couple of slides are just some things that we would see. It's just your basic typical quick New York tour, Central Park, Broadway, Empire State Building, the Statue of Liberty, you know, those kind of things, the financial district, that kind of stuff, the 9/11 memorial. So here's some hotel procedures, you probably could read through those. We'll make sure that they all are lights out the same time. We'll go through and make sure that they're in their rooms. I just went on a DC trip with them in the spring, so, um, I know how to handle that. We get to pick our, our show. They, they gave us a whole big list, the ones that the kids seem to be interested in and that I know are appropriate are Hamilton, Aladdin, Lion King. I think they would probably be our top three choices, which is just a matter of what we can get for those dates. So, so there's some more of the stuff, you know, shopping, that's important. COVID-19, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to go into great detail about this, but it is very similar almost to the T as our, our trips that we've taken with Disney, with our band trip. Clearly, that's something that we'll continue to monitor. As of right now, knock on something, things are, things are in a much better place, but there is an option for insurance for individuals that purchase that trip. And then again, that's the importance of also having an administrator on, on the trip that if there's a negative, not good phone call that has to be made, whether it be COVID-19 or a discipline component, that's something that's on my shoulders. But it's obviously if somebody gets sick, they get moved to another room. Again, you guys know this from the Disney trip that we took, but it is almost exactly the same as, as it was with that.
Yep, there's the insurance thing.
Absolutely. And there's a component that says discipline, but again, I'm a little less concerned about that with, with an administrator being on the trip. We are going to be super clear about what the expectations are. Again, when you're bringing seniors on a trip, your worry is a little bit different than it is with perhaps freshmen, but, um, but kiddos, kiddos are good and they...
And they, they're really excited about the thought of going because in this class, um, you know, I've been with them for the four years and, you know, we were, I worked on three floats because of COVID and, um, you know, that kind of thing. And then I had, she joined me last year and I've gotten to really know these kids and, um, I heard they were the worst ever and now they're awesome. You know what I mean? Like they've really, they've really grown on me and I, I'm excited about traveling with them and the possibility of traveling with them.
Teresa said something and I wrote this down just because it stuck with me when it was talking about our typology. And when it has us identified as a small town, high poverty school district, when you think about opportunities to get kiddos out of Claremont County, Ohio and be able to see, see the world, um, that's, that's such a great learning experience that sitting in a classroom doesn't get to them.
That, that just made me think of the last time I went. We got off the bus and we walked. Were you on that trip?
I was not.
You were not, okay. So as a student?
It was in those years though.
Yes, it was. But, um, we got off the bus and the kids went as soon as they went like this, you know, like looking up like, oh my gosh, this is like crazy how cool this place is. So, um, so yeah, so that just, that just solidified like it's really important for them to get out and travel. And some of them, you know, this might be their opportunity to go to New York. So that's, that's all.
So do you guys have any questions of them about the trip? Because later on in your agenda, of course, it's an out of state, out of state trip. So we have to give approval, of course, pending that the trip goes on with the, they get their, the amount of people they need to take on the trip and everything. I have met with them and I know that, I mean, there's a lot of safety procedures and protocol that they've got in there from the very time that they walk out to get on the bus. I mean, we're not just letting them take a bag of whatever with them. Our bags are searched and, I mean, so they want to offer the kids a great, safe experience. So any questions?
Well, and being two months before graduation, I'm sure they'll be on their...
Yes, correct. No, and I have a senior and he went on the eighth grade trip. Well, I think they were the first group for a long time. And yeah, that was sent. They had another eighth grade trip, so they did okay. And a band student and so I felt very comfortable.
And I, like I said, I went, I went to the one in the school and it was great. Yeah, a little poor.
We'll have, we'll have a parent meeting based on the approval today in the very, very near weeks coming up. We're articulating all of those pieces. The presentation that we'll have with them is going to be very in-depth as opposed to us being pretty quick, giving you a run through.
Which is the presentation you had in your package that I see, so.
Yeah, I just want to take an opportunity to thank you guys. Stepping up and allowing individuals to be able to have this opportunity is really big. I actually knew, the reason I was shaking my head is I did have classmates who had never been outside of Claremont County who were able to travel to DC and New York when I was in school. And I think that is huge and doesn't go lightly on the administrators and staff who go. So thank you.
And I want to say as a former student, I graduated. Mrs. Bramble went with me in 2003 to New York City. You were my next kid that never went further than Kentucky. So being able to get out of Claremont County and with my classmates and wonderful teachers, it was definitely one of my most favorite times of my high school career and I'm so glad it's coming back.
And I just wanted to share real quick. So I have three boys, two have already graduated Goshen, Connor's a junior. So Tony took a class trip to New York City. And fantastic experience. He even brought me home a little ornament for the Christmas tree. I mean, it was, you couldn't have asked for anything better. Then poor Bradley graduated in the middle of COVID, had a very untraditional senior year. There were no trips. He's still waiting for me to pay for him to go to New York City. It wasn't my fault COVID hit and I didn't get to go on that trip. So I can tell you the juniors, Connor's group, they're already talking. They've heard the talk in the, you know, in the school and they're excited for their opportunity as well. So fantastic experience if, if you ladies are full of...
Put that on the calendar. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us up to item number 10, facilities update.
So just a couple of things underneath of that. Of course, just a report on the bond issue. We've been sharing plenty of information with our public, whether it was the Chamber of Commerce meeting, different school advisory council meetings that I attended, mailer that went out. So just trying to get out of information with that to everyone. Also, the second item that I want to talk about is tornado recovery. And I'll have Mr. Schinkel kind of update where we stand currently. I mean, I think that the biggest thing is as he goes into this is just look at the church next door and understand that it's, this is, this process is taking a significant time. I mean, so you want to, go ahead?
Yeah, um, you know, just going through, I mean, there, there's been a lot. And I know I've kind of gave you guys the 50,000 foot view of where we're at. And a lot of stuff has been done. I mean, things that we still have left is the gym floor, which we're going to next week to look at different examples on what is feasible to do. And if there's like over 20 years, different hardwood floors that are available. I mean, they, I mean, like more for like to, for their knees and gifts and all that sort of stuff. So we're just going to take a look at it just to see if it's something that maybe, you know, we should, you know, should look at. We're meeting this Wednesday with our roofing companies. They went out and they basically got the materials, but just getting quotes right now on bids, which, you know, we talked about our bond issue and the cloth. They can't even get bids right now. I mean, it's just taken so long, you know, to this time. But we're meeting with them, they finally have that. And then we're also going to be meeting with Skanks, our construction company in regards to the ceiling tiles from Mark Cook because that's going to be labor intensive just to put through all of our sprinkler systems and that sort of thing. And then also they're going to be looking at the storefront of Mark Cook because right now those rooms were redone with block, glass block, but the glass block doesn't match the other ones. So they've done, they said that they will match storefront. So what we end up getting is if we replace all the glass block and kept it as is, which would be to the connector and then all the way down the side of the church, they would replace all those to keep them equal. They wanted prices for glass block and then just glass, which is basically where the connector is. So we're looking at those items and hopefully we can try to get that scheduled this summer. But then this summer, you know, you've got to be careful on tearing off roofs if you're doing a hardwood floor because of rain. So now we're going to start really getting into scheduling and then we've got ball camps and that sort of thing. So the plot's thickening a little bit on, you know, what we're going to be doing with that sort of stuff. And Mr. Roberts even comes today that we forgot about the bird bands out front that got torn out. I mean, we...
Well, I think that's a fountain.
Fountain, I'm sorry. It's a big bird in there though. But yes, so it's not like that, I mean, it honestly keeps popping up.
I walked over to the high school yesterday, Friday, and I walked, the fountain's gone. I forgot that that tree that fell there crushed the fountain, you know? I had, I mean, were there things that we noticed every day? I mean, it's just, I think we'll probably be noticing and picking up shingles for years, so.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah.
And they did, I mean, the last thing, oh, I forgot briefly is that they, they did start on the fences. They're doing the tennis court fence first where the windscreen is. I've been looking at it from where you would watch a tennis match, it looks fine. But if you go down the side, I mean, literally the wind just took it. So they're starting there and then the fence around the pond and over by the middle school. So hopefully all of our fencing will be done. So it's getting there, but it's, it's definitely a process to get that going because a lot of that work's not going to happen until this summer if we can get it all done. So I don't know if you guys got any questions on anything else. I mean, I, I think our plan is, you know, we're pushing probably $2 to $3 million on everything now. So significantly, and they've been great working with us though.
I have a question with the gym floor. Talk about different materials in the house. They, they speak of any of it, like they introduce ACL injuries and stuff.
They kind of talk like there's different safety type things. You know, I mean, the one at the middle school, which, I mean, we probably know a little bit more about gym floors, we thought we would. But the one at the middle school, that wood, clearly those little strips, if you look, they're glued right to the concrete. So then in the high school, there's actually like different layers of like rubber and like plywood type stuff that had built up before the woods on there. So it's just different materials. But we thought we, if we're, if they're going to replace the whole thing, we ought to at least take a look at it and see if there's new technology out there that maybe, you know, look at it.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Okay, that brings us up to public participation.
We do have one.
Each person dressed in board will give his or her name and address. You'll be allotted two minutes until a total time of 30 minutes has expired. During that period, no person shall speak twice until all who desire to speak have the opportunity to do so. So at this time, we have somebody.
Patricia Meyer.
You'll stand and give your name and address, please.
I'm Patricia Meyer. I live on 6814 Linton Road. And my husband and I were coming here today because honestly, we don't really know where to go. We first started at the zone meeting about this, I don't know what it is,[1690.28] We first started at the zone meeting about this, um, I don't know what it is, a clinic going in at Mark Hook, we're totally against it, we think it's, um, just not necessary for so many reasons. I sent the board an email with all of my points, I have it, if I, if you want me to read it, I can. Um, but it boils down to, it's not educational, I love everything I heard here today, it's my first board meeting and it won't be my last, um, it's very, um, encouraging, I've always thought that this school was exceptional, I have a granddaughter that graduated, top of her class, and is now in college, and my youngest one here is in junior high. So, there's 12 altogether, um, while one is not in Goshen, but it's, so 11 students gone through Goshen, are going through Goshen, and I appreciate the teaching, I mean, I, I personally, from public school, my kids were in public school, and we came from poverty, we've been in a school with it, you would never know that here, and I, and now I understand why, it has been done very wisely, that's why I don't understand why this has been even thought of, and I'm, would have been saying something sooner if I would have known, this was the only information I got from it about going to the zoning meeting. So, I went to the zoning meeting with my husband, I do all the talking, sorry, he's in construction, we had our own construction company, he's been in construction for six, 50 years, 50 years, sorry, um, and so he knows about the zoning and everything, they did explain about that, so that was good, about how, you know, conditional use and everything, but as I said at that meeting, and I'm going to say here, why does it have to be in our school building when we need more room? Why does it have to be in the building at all or on our school property when there's a business district just down the street? Why, when the health source is just down the road? You know, I, it, none of it made sense to me or my husband. I asked my, my kids, whose kids go here, did you guys know about this? They didn't know about it. They said, that one daughter told me, she goes, that we got something about that it was going to be a possible health source, but she goes, I thought it was going to be up for voting, she goes, that's the last we heard of it. So, I don't know where that ball got dropped or.
Okay, time is up, ma'am.
Do you want to speak, hon?
I could. Walter Meyer, 6814 Linton Road, Goshen. Um, my concerns is why do you want to give part of the school away to a business when they can build right down the street? And our tax dollars paid for all this, and the health source is not going to pay us a penny to school, they're just getting a building for free. I'm just asking, why, why would it even go through with, with that being said?
I'd be glad to provide just a very, very brief answer, and thank you guys for coming. And, and, and brief, uh, the School-Based Healthcare Center, we didn't invent that, I mean, they exist, this will be the fourth 1 and 9 school districts in Claremont County, um, and the whole idea is by, like many other things, is number one, you're removing barriers to learning for kids. Um, we have 121 kids that between last week and this week that, um, we have, that they've gone to the, to dental clinic that we've had at school, and the idea is that if a kid's got a toothache, he can't learn, um, and so we're trying to remove barriers, many of our families are underserved in the medical aspect, and, uh, so secondly, uh, you know, so that's, that's a motivation behind school-based healthcare centers, and then secondly, um, it's a, if somebody happens to get sick, it's time to go home, and a parent, it takes them two hours to get off work and get here, they can't get access to that before their parent takes them home, if the parent so chooses. Um, and what they find is attendance is better in these schools and academic learning is better in these schools, and if we're not happy with it after a period of time, it's a year-to-year contract and we can change that, and just really briefly, I, I know this, this is an explanation, um, and I'd be glad to sit down with you guys, my office is right at the end of Mark Hook, and we'll go through everything, I'll show you where it's at and everything. We took a room that was being used by an occupational therapist and crammed them into a room with some other people, we didn't eliminate occupational therapy, which is another related service for our kids that we get, um, and so the whole idea is that we're trying to serve the whole child, uh, and we're shuffling around spaces, we're using closets and so on and so forth, you know, but one classroom doesn't make the difference on a bond issue, um, because we're, we're shuffling people around constantly, so, and that's the brief answer, and I'd be glad to sit down with you guys, if, uh, your phone number's on the sheet, I'll give it if you'd like to come in and sit with me, um, and I can answer any of your questions at that point in time, so, all right? Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, and I hope you do come back, because tonight is just a sample of, um, what we see every month, and it is just a delight to see all the hard work and then just the students and all there as well, so, that was great.
Okay, that brings us up to item, um, 11B. First of all, I don't know if you have anything you want to add under this on the financial?
No.
Okay.
At this time.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve B financial 1 through 6?
Second.
Would you see if we could call the roll?
Mr. Arera? This, this is Casey.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Item C, personnel motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schink, would you call the roll?
This is Casey.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
D miscellaneous, now here's where we're going to vote, this will include the senior threat. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
There's seconds?
Second.
Mr. Schink, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Board of Education reports, uh, we'll start with, uh, Mrs. Pat Rocky, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just locally, uh, my building is Spalding, and it's a great time, every time I go to Spalding Elementary, um, I helped out with their Warrior Walk, which, um, was also the homecoming pep rally, and it was a great event.
Okay, Mr. Arera?
Uh, just a reminder, we have the Senior Citizen Dinner October 20th here at the high school.
Our theme is? Oh, come on, oh, sorry, I thought.
Yeah, we know.
The good.
Oh, good old, good old days.
He knows, right?
Yeah. She didn't think it was there.
He's excited. Just two things, um, Great Oaks Meeting is this Wednesday, but we did hire a new treasure last month, we're snagging the Milford Treasure.
Oh, right, right.
Um, he comes highly recommended, so we had a lot of questions, uh, for the committee that came up, you know, they did have to go through a lot of interviews, and, um, and he had to sit through like a half-day-long interview with the committee, so, I'm excited, he was there, so we got to meet him, um, he starts shadowing Ben in December, and then, um, Ben Van Horn, um, is retiring December 31st, so big shoes to fill, um, like I said, Great Oaks Meeting is this Wednesday, and then I went to my building for Student of the Month, which just so happened to be the last day of September, um, and they're doing some great things in that building, like they did let me walk through the building because I haven't been in there a long time, but honestly, like if any of you guys have a chance to go visit just the library, the things that they're doing in that building, it is utterly amazing, so, yeah, it was a good day.
Deborah?
So, student achievement, um, I have a few things to share, and I'm going to send you guys an email, but, um, as you know, the Student Achievement Fair, uh, with OSBA applications and registrations, really getting pushed now, so they encourage all schools to highlight innovative programs, so as always.
And we do have one.
Yeah, we're doing, right?
Um, as always, just checking on that, and then, uh, this month is Ohio School Safety Month, and Week 1, um, was comprehensive safety, Week 2, emotional safety, Week 3, physical safety, and Week 4 is Know Your Role, um, there's a highlight and a link on there if you guys want to look at that, and then I'm sure you guys have seen this, but there's also resources available that, um, they're pushing right now to raise awareness about the dangers of counterfeit pills, so, um, especially for our older students, there's a lot of stuff going around, um, with like vitamin-looking pills that, um, are very dangerous, so making sure our oldest students, but really all of our students are aware to the level that they need to be. And then there's a new, um, state and, uh, local government use of broadband expansion to create jobs, so, um, this might be good for our high schoolers, there is, uh, opportunity for a micro-predention, credential available for Ohioans in underserved areas like ours, and, um, it can actually, let's see, can contribute to the state broadband deployment and expand its wireless broadband infrastructures as certified fiber-optic installers and power technicians, they can actually get that certification as, um, young adults can walk right into a job in the state of Ohio, so I'll share that as well, I thought that would be good, uh, to share at our Business Advisory Council meeting that's coming up this week. Um, that is it for student achievement, and then I'm the Mark Hook rep, so I have an upcoming meeting, um, with Troy, and look forward to serving some events coming up in the next, um, month or so.
Okay, for those of you in the audience, when you hear them talk about their building, we went back to each board member has a building, and, uh, I think it's well-worked.
Yeah.
I think it lets everybody know what the other person's doing, and I appreciate, we don't have five buildings, so I don't have to do it.
I think you should be bored on this.
But anyway, just to let you know, if, if, when you hear them talk about their, their building, that's what we initiated here this year, so, and it's worked out real well. So, that brings us up to the Superintendent's Report.
So, you've heard all about Goal 1, that, uh, high-quality instruction and Goal 2, early literacy, and honestly, they covered almost every bullet underneath those, and then I covered along with Julia, who was, was here. If you want to talk briefly on a few things at the College of Career Readiness, reminder to, uh, those of you on the VAC, that that is, uh, Wednesday, the Business Advisory Council, you guys tonight approved the plan for the year, which we actually put together a lot, Mr. Dubbs has been meeting with a whole lot of people, trying to get his feet wet, uh, getting to learn, uh, his predecessors' contacts, and, and, uh, we'll be running that meeting, uh, that day. Uh, one of the things they're instituting this year, um, upon his arrival and me with Mrs. Walker and her Guides Department, is that every student that has met with Mr. Moller that is a senior and has undecided plans, if you remember Deborah and, uh, Julie on the VAC last year, we saw the one talk about the GRIT project that she was in, they're going to give them the assessment, which will give a good picture of what that kid's interested in, so we can get that senior a plan if they don't have one, um, before the end of the school year.
I think we have 25 students, just as a reference point, that, um, are undecided at this point as a senior.
And this, and this GRIT assessment, I think he's going to show a little bit of it again to the VAC, it's really neat to take a look at, uh, because it tells you a lot about your, what you're interested are and your strengths, um, and it recommends career fields, they'll attach them to a mentor, and some of those career field, some online mentor to help coach them up, so, um, so that's part of that career readiness piece. Uh, then we'll go ahead and skip down to communication, uh, we have, uh, the district bi-weekly newsletter's been going out, um, sent out via, via email, uh, community presentations, I talked about those on the bond issue, um, I don't even know what to say about Meg, other than Artis and Yellins, Communications, because we've done so many interviews, and I tell you, this topped it off, my mother-in-law comes to my house last night, goes, hey, Goshen's in People Magazine, like, but first of all, I only know if I'm, if I'm always happy about that, you know, here, I'm in the magazine in some way in our district, and of course there is, and I sent you guys a picture, a cute little thing on Meg or a facility dog, and, uh, I guess Wednesday, the, one of the daytime shows is doing a little segment on her, Drew Barrymore Show, um, you know, she was in, uh, gosh, I mean, everything, Fox News this week, at New York Time, New York Post, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's kind of fun, you know, I mean, but I think that goes back to some of the things that we've been talking about, you know, whether it's that senior trip, or whether it's, uh, you know, helping kids with their health needs, or a, uh, facility dog with, uh, emotional support of our students, all of that picture comes together to take care of kids, and it's more than just the academics, which we try to take care of as well. So, uh, it's been a, it's been a fun ride to watch that, but that's, uh, under that communication piece, um, and then student development, um, I think, uh, we talked about most of everything under here, except I will tell you two things, one, uh, Mr. Schinkle, myself, Mark Slagle, and the two officers, our two SROs, have applied for the $400,000, $100,000 per building for the school safety grant, hoping we'll cross at our fingers that we'll be able to get it, uh, we focused on increasing our communication means through radios, improved intercom systems that would have some tremendous safety features, like, like I could initiate a lockdown from my cell phone anywhere inside the building type of, uh, features, um, that would be incredible, a pre-recorded message would play based upon what code I put in, I mean, there's some neat things, uh, additional cameras, some additional key cards, uh, systems, you know, we, uh, really try to discourage our students from propping open doors when they go out to get something in their car at high school, or from, like, when they're taking something out, uh, like trash if they work in the lunchroom, uh, so we're putting card readers on as many doors as we can get them on. Uh, so we're doing a lot of those pieces in there, we'll let you know when we hear back, um, also on, other words, on, on grants, we did get $177,000 for the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which funded the new Chromebooks for our students at Mark Hook, and we just got the Ohio EPA Water Bottle Refilling Station Grant for $10,000, so if you continue to replace the old-fashioned water bottles, water, uh, fountains, thank you, with the water bottle stations. Uh, and the, one of the things that, uh, I really, I have the pleasure to, to serve on is that Long-Term Relief Committee, it meets every Tuesday, Mrs. Drazio and I are again on that, and right now we've handed out, there were, and remember that was money that was donated by Duke, United Way, a telephone, a TV, Goshen Education Foundation Tornado Relief Fund, tons of private citizens, people sitting in this room, we donated money to go to tornado relief victims, and, um, I think there were almost up to $130,000 of dollars handed out of the $160,000, um, and, uh, meeting in these, and the last annual was 58 families have been helped by that money, so that is a, that is Goshen people and people who love Goshen people, taking care of Goshen people, so, uh, makes me proud to be a part of it. So, those are the highlights, uh, just some reminders for you guys, uh, thank you again for participating in your professional development, the OSBA Southwest Region Fall Conference, time is there, again, the Welcome and Dinner does not start until 6, so when you see registration or 5, you do not have to be there unless you're Phil Harera. I'll be serving all that Southwest Ohio Board, you'd be there for?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, and then, uh, other important dates to remind you, 12th for VAC, 20th for Senior Dinner, 19th for Facilities, uh, Steering Committee at 7 o'clock, 19th, which is a Wednesday rather than Tuesday. And that's all I have, sir, hold on a second, I have more. Oh, gosh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Bailey, for correcting me. Um, I do have this one, too, that I slid in there, because Friday we got this one, which, okay, so, you know, I'm like Mrs. Scherzinger. We're competitive, we, we, we want the very best for our kids, and every year, an independent organization called Niche Rate Schools, based upon a lot of different things, from your test scores, uh, to, you can read there at the bottom, like, yeah, it's test scores, and it's, it doesn't include everything in there, but you can see clubs, activities, administration, college preparation, diversity, teachers, academics, uh, they reach you in a whole lot of things, there are, uh, Goshen Public School received an A-, um, and if you look at the next slide, it's, there are two schools in Claremont County that are rated A-, so that rating, two were rated a B, three were rated a B-, one a C+, and one a C, uh, which makes us very proud to see, somebody, John, you asked where we're at county on test scores, and there's another example, and, and then all of, 104 out of 608 districts, so, so, thank you, Mr. Bailey, for reminding me to do that, so, and I will say, since, but some of them have left, but Randy's here, you're, we got, oh, we still got three teachers inside the room, Danielle, you're half of one right now, so you're, you're the teacher coach, when people talk about the, the best teachers in Claremont County and, and stuff, well, NISAD, we did have the best teachers in Claremont County, they were rated number one in nine school districts, so, uh, so, awesome, yeah, hats off to everybody's got a part of all that, so.
Darren, I just have one question.
Yes.
Can we check to make sure, like, the mailers that we send out, because I knew something was in the, like, July mailer, or something about health, health source?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we have, like, the updated address list that we're sending this to, can we just check that?
We can double-check that, yes, I could, oh, like, that one, I think we said something out May and something in July on that, I mean, we email our parents, for example, things like that, and tell them here's stuff that we're talking about, but, yeah, those they go on.
In terms of like those who are my parents, I mean, I do know it's hard to stay, I mean, I have trouble keeping up on all the communication, honestly.
And then we get those from the Postal Service, so I will double-check with Mark to make sure that he has the most up-to-date ones, so, it'd be good call, good question. So, that's all I have, Mr. Bintin, really, this time.
Okay, well, I guess it's my turn. Under other, I have a teacher from Spalding who would like to have permission to have a walking, walking trail from the school property over to the library. I have not talked to her face-to-face, only through an email. She has the okay from the. She has the okay from the library staff. Mr. Peetram said he would help her to get the okay from trustees. She needs our okay. But now, there are two private people that own property that she'll have to get an easement or something. She's worked on it for the last ten years. And she told me that she had talked to Sue about it. But somewhere along the line, and I don't remember, I, I guess this is my tenth year, eleventh, ninth, but it was dropped and then we went through the COVID. So I told her that I would bring it to your attention tonight. We don't have to vote on it, but she would like to have permission from us to go forward and see what she's, she's going to have to give some grants and so on. And the two private owners.
There's a lot of work, I think, John, saying, if you want to go pursue it and think, and bring us, bring me back the information and bring you guys with her or something, okay. But there's a, I mean, is it a concept to even think about supporting if she went out and got all the information?
And the big thing is with this project, there will have to be a bridge built. And now we're talking about probably the Corps of Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers. I have not walked past ours, but that is a big one. So all I'm asking you tonight is that we don't have to have a vote on this, but is everybody in agreement that we give her permission to?
Explore.
Explore, see what she needs to get. According to my email from her, Mr. Pigram hasn't went to their trustees yet, which I'm sure it's going to be all right. But she does have two private landowners to go to. Maybe they can get a grant. My, my big thing was if I'm back at Spalding, I'm going to have a lunch by the time I get to my person. So I don't know, you know, whether she starts it back here behind the high school and goes. But the bridge will be the big thing. And Mr. Pigram did tell her that, you know, it has to be a solid bridge, not a rope bridge, you know, like they have across the city, up the code and so on. Probably the Army Corps of Engineers, soil conservation or whatever. But I wanted to bring it to your attention. I will try to get in contact with her and let her know she has our permission to pursue it and see what she can come up with.
Is there, like, yes, I think it's an interesting idea. And I'd like to know more of, like, the access that she's looking for because is there something we could fulfill in the meantime where the library could come here?
Well, we are doing those things, just so you know, where we have a very active partnership. We have groups that take a tour, tours the library. The library will work with our individual teachers to bring the library to us.
Yeah.
I, I think she's wanting, and the library's wanting an experience that will. I think there's a lot of obstacles. I think if, if she's willing to invest the time to write down some of this information, you know, and, and bring it back. And I think that's just what John's saying. If you want to bring us back that information, it's, it's a long way and there's all kinds of obstacles to it. But I just, I think she's kind of plucked the, the idea down, so. The public libraries have been great to us. Kristi Magnus, Sabrina, I mean, they've been awesome. Heck, I think that you guys were talking about them at your night the other night.
Yes, they actually came to the family night at Mark Hook and set up a booth and, yeah, it was fantastic.
And every teacher has a book then, so we can make specific requests each month and they fulfill that.
Oh, nice. They bring the books to us?
Yes, for a month, for four weeks, and then we rotate them out.
So we have a tight partnership with them, so.
And the library being a county library, there may be that she can get into some grants or, you know, with the commissioner.
Well, access to books and all kinds of, yeah.
So I will, I will get back with her and let her know that she has our permission to pursue something, so. But I just found out about it and that's the way it is. So does anybody have anything else? Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Shankle, you call the roll?
This is Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bintin?
Yes. Meeting's adjourned at eight-thirty.
I'll shoot you an email. I just want to make sure I got it right.